Welcome to the Slutman's meeting for the town of Acton, Maine from May 2nd, 2017. First item is salute the flag.
Accolade the agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
A second.
Moved to second to approve the agenda, any discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Approval of the minutes of the last meeting, and we have two-
Just the 18th, so we're looking for approval for tonight.
Last week's is not ready yet.
And Bill wasn't here, so I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of April 18th.
I'll second that. Moved seconded to approve the minutes of April 18th. All, uh, any discussion? Nope, all in favor, all opposed, okay. So that was the 18th, next week we will do last week's. Department of Heads Committee Chair, we have first off Mary Grant.
So the Mary Grant Committee contacted me, one of the chairman, I think the new chairman, and she wanted me to create a slide and help spread the word, they're looking to have a community cleanup day on Saturday, May 20th, at the Mary Grant Nature Preserve, they're looking for it to start around 9:00 a.m. and to go until completion, but essentially, hopefully until about noon time, so cleanup day on Saturday, May 20th from Mary Grant.
Who is the new chair?
Her name is Mary.
Terrell?
No. Terrell, that sounds about right.
Okay. Okay, Bob Sikaz, or Barbara's daughter.
Right.
Okay.
The other thing that she asked, they're looking to have some small, small groups have inquired with them about having maybe a birthday party there or some sort of celebration, so she asked me if we would help them draft a form, essentially to make sure that the liability is not on the town, so I spoke to Attorney Warren today and kind of went through the ideas, what they were looking for, you know, no open fire, no alcohol, the basics, and drafting something to come before you with the next meeting to review so that they can use that for using the premises.
Similar to what we use for the hall here.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on Mary Grant?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Fire Department.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good.
So I'm coming forward tonight, our forestry one truck, which is the older one-ton forestry vehicle we have, has got some repair issues that are going to be kind of expensive to pay, so we're looking at possibly, in light of the fact that we have our forest for two truck now, which was put in service last summer, we were looking to possibly put that out for bid as well to sell the vehicle. The vehicle's a 1986 GMC Sierra 3500 four-by-four with 49,092 miles on it, utility body, it's got the 454 for a motor in it. It's also got a Hail 18 horsepower pump model number 30FB-B42, I believe it's 135 GPM pump, and it also has a 200 gallon water tank on it, as well as a 200-foot booster reel, all pre-piped obviously to the pump. So, we were looking to recommend that we put it up for the bids to, at a price of about 3,500.
Okay.
And you only need one?
Um, preferably you have two, but especially with that one being smaller, it can get into some smaller areas that the one, the bigger one we have can't, yet that bigger one can go in a lot of places, the little one can't, so they kind of offset each other nicely. But what I'm concerned with is due to the age of the vehicle and the repairs that are going to become necessary for us to, to keep it in, in forest firefighting shape, so to speak, could become quite pricey for us, so.
Yeah, it was a used truck when Acton got it.
Okay.
Yeah, we got, came out of York, correct? So.
Yeah, it started life as a squad truck, it had a box on the back.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. I think 3,500, do you want to drop that to 2,000?
I'm all for 2,000.
2,000?
Sure.
What's the feelings of the board, do you want to make a minimum bid of 2,000 on it?
And hope we get more?
It isn't 85, 86, so it's-
I mean, this is not my area, but-
Yeah. I think you're going to get more than that, but-
1986, yeah, that's pretty old.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, the four-wheel drive, the transmission, and everything all works really well with it, you know, it'll make a good utility vehicle for somebody that has the knowledge to put a little of their own abilities into it for repairs and stuff, so.
Like get rid of the 454 engine? That was a bone of contention I had when the truck was bought new, because I was on the committee when it was bought new in York, so I just didn't agree with the 454, but that's another story.
Right.
So, how does that sound to you, Bill?
What?
Have a minimum bid of $2,000 on it, and?
It's currently, what, 3,000?
No, we don't have any bid on it right now, but I mean, just do a minimum of 2,000 and hope we get more?
All right.
Okay.
Do we have to make a motion?
Can you email me that document so I can prepare the bid?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
A lot of information.
When would the board like the deadline for this, so if I can get it advertised in the next couple of days, so, open them on the 30th?
I would say that'd be great, yeah, that's a month out.
So I'll give them a couple of weeks?
Yeah.
Are you in a hurry, or is that all right?
No, that's fine, and I think just with the similar parameters is for pickup and things like that, naturally with the tanker.
That one all right?
Yep.
When I'll send done?
All set.
If you want to send that to me, I'll pretty it up, send it back to you for approval, and then we'll get it posted?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yep, do we need a vote on that?
Um, no, but actually, Chief, we have one more thing that I, you don't have to, but you're sitting in the can if you'd like.
Well, I think we'll, don't you do the bid and then we vote on-
Yeah, let's do, let's do a vote on it and make, for the minimum bid, so whoever wants to make a motion?
I make a motion that we put the tanker one truck up for bid at-
Forestry one.
Second.
Forestry one, sorry, forestry one at 2,000.
Second.
Moved to seconded to put a surplus fire truck, known as forestry one, out to bid for a minimum bid of $2,000, any heard the discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed, okay.
I didn't know while he was up here if you wanted to discuss the budget, where we had the budget workshop Friday, we hadn't really touched base on them, I know you're going to be talking to the road commissioners, so if we can get on the final page as to what you guys decided to move forward, so that he can hear it from you and we can go from there.
Sure, who's got the numbers, I was not at the budget meeting on Friday, so.
So I think the only thing that, and this was per the chief's request, so the per diem position continued to stay out, they cut the fire cap, the fire truck fund to 15,000, took the $10,000 out of the, out of the capital improvement, because that's where you were buying the SCBA anyways, and per year request, they took this SCBA out and put in, how many? Turnout gear, 15?
15.
15.
And they thought that you could still buy a couple at the end of the year if possible.
Okay.
But that's what you decided, you'd rather have that than that, right?
Yeah, I think we're, we're, the turnout gear situation is kind of more of a dire need at this point, we did, as we'd said, we flow tested the SCBA and all but one passed, they did have to make a lot of adjustments in there at the max on their adjustments at this point, next year could be a totally different ballgame on how they test and what their repairs could cost, but the turnout gear is definitely by standard at the end of its life, come about June time anyways, so that's more of kind of the dire need to, to replace at this point, so I'd rather-
Thank you for putting it in writing too, because I felt like you were going back and forth on which one was more important, and I'm like, I just need him to write it down.
I think, it might have been just confusing, mixed messages from me, that's kind of been my thought all along, but, you know, if we had to choose between one or the other, so. I do, next year though, we are definitely going to have to work on a plan somehow next year to, to work on the SCBA though, I, next year will be kind of a do or die on the SCBA type situation, so.
And I think they talked about putting, because like they were going to put the half of them in this year, they had talked about just moving that to next year, but, so I just want to make sure I said this right, so the per diem removed, reduce the fire truck fund to 15,000, remove 10,000 from the fire department equipment reserve, and we're taking out the 51,183 for the nine SCBA and putting it in with the 15 turnout gear for the 31,778 and change.
Yeah.
Sounds right.
Everything else, 3% increase for the staff, everything else stayed the same.
Yep, yep, sounds right. Yep, I mean, we're just, we're trying to, trying to balance a, balance a proposed budget and-
No, I understand.
Watch the tax rates and whatnot, so.
Sounds good.
I mean, even though we'd love to just give everybody what they want, but-
Well, hopefully, hopefully we'll be, you know, between this and then working on the CBA next year, we'll be able to get ourselves in a position with longevity to plan a little better for the future on this and start establishing something for that, so.
Yeah, that's something I think's been lacking, so.
Yeah.
That'll be great.
I got some ideas on that, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Road Commissioners.
So as the board recalls, just to make sure that everybody's on the page, same page, so similar to the fire department, you'd ask to meet with the road commissioners to just kind of go over what your thoughts were on the budget, and the gentleman thought it would be better just have the discussion at the meeting-
Sure.
-so that everybody could hear it once and for all.
Sure.
So you guys made any changes to our budget?
Yes, we have.
Yes, we have. Do you have all the notes?
Want me to read them?
You have all the notes.
Okay, so I'm just reading them, so. So the road stipend, originally they had asked for 15,500 for a stipend, so they'd get a weekly stipend, the board cut it in half, $6,500 for each district, and they wanted it to be paid hourly instead of a flat stipend, so they, the decision you guys made was they could get, I think based on their hourly rate, it was either four or five hours, they could bill each week, so they were putting $6,500, half of the stipend into an administrative account for you to bill out of for that. Wage, road wage sheet, hourly increase, they increased the hourly wages by 10%, and then they increased the equipment rate by 5% if an increase was initially requested. I don't know if there were a couple of them you didn't request any change on, if you did, they obviously left those the same, and they gave five, a flat 5% for the rest of the equipment. And then the other conversation was regarding the loader rate, they were looking at $3,000 flat per season per district.
Can, can I reconcile, someone reconcile why you gave that $3,000, what's, where'd that number come from?
The 3,000?
Instead of 6,000 per loader, now it's down to 3,000.
We looked around at what the other towns were, were doing for that, the loader down at the sand salt shed, right?
What's, what town would you be referring to, Shapley?
Yeah, they have one-
That was the only town you liked that, right?
Yeah, we have one loader down there, and they, they charged them 6,000 for the one, do all the sand and salt.
Yeah, well, you do your research, okay, right now I believe Michelle gave me a price, it was over $11,000, because we're getting, right now we're getting paid $2 a yard to load the material out, okay, which is fair, we believe, and not including during the season when salt comes in, that gets charged out of that same account when we're pushing the salt up, so I believe that number's closer to 13, 13.5, when you start including, um-
Why, why is it twice?
Because Mr. Goodwin's been doing that for zillion years, and he's not doing it anymore, and he's got a loader there that's made in 1960s, and that's why he decides to do it. We, when Scott and I sat down, we looked at it, okay, the problem we're having is this, I get a call from, say, chief, and I gotta run up to 109 because there's an accident, I gotta go start that loader up, load two yards of material up, okay, I'm gonna make $4 when it's 10 degrees out, and our loader's gotta sit there for 15 minutes to warm up, okay? A lot of the times we leave the loader running, because it's so cold, you don't want to have a guy jumping in and out of the loader, starting them go, starting to go, they gotta stay warm, so these things run a lot, and then we, when we were doing our budget, we, we started figuring, well, okay, would it be better off if we turned around and rented somebody else's loader, you know, rented a loader through NorTrax or, or Caterpillar or Volvo, something like that, and, and we know what those prices are, you know, it's a lot of money, so we figured out roughly what we spend a year, and this way here, you know, I'm not billing out for 15 minutes to go down and throw on a load, you know, stuff like that, you know, it just, it made it simpler, but $6,000, the loader, the loader's there from usually middle to end of October, usually when we put salt sand up, this year was there till what, my, we still got one there, but, you know, at least April 15th, so that loader is tied to that building for five, six months, it's, it doesn't leave very often, if it does, it's only going to go push back snowbags.
So you have one loader there?
We got two loaders there.
Two.
Yeah.
Do we, can we get just one down there and pay for one?
What would be, that-
What happens when we break down?
It, we've had this-
What, I mean, a loader break down in the middle of the night, you know, I mean, that's, was I, the idea is just if we have two loaders there, we're getting loaded and going, you know?
And, and the thing is, is-
The equipment does break.
Yeah, we actually had both loaders once break, and we had to bring a third one in, you know, it was just the little things, you lost a head gasket, and the other loader lost, I think it was getting engine oil, fuel oil in the engine, it was a simple fix, we just didn't know what it was, but during that time, we held another one in, because we, we were able to do that, so, but, you know, if I break down or he breaks down, there's a loader there, in the middle of the night when a loader gels up on you, because it's really cold out, what are you loading out with? Now you're gonna take an hour or two to go get another loader, bring it down, by then, you know, during a nice storm, it's working, it's working fine, we, so what I did, Scott and I talked about this yesterday, and what I did is I went and I placed out Renton Loader, Renton Loader, I called Caterpillar, I called Volvo, and I called John Deere, and these guys emailed me these prices, now if you look at these prices, like this one right here, that one, that's, that's $4,900 a month, that's to get it there and to get it home afterwards, that's $1,400, that's a month, that one right there, that's $4,200 a month, and this one right here is 4,000 a month, so.
That's without insurance, fuel, fuel in it.
You know, these, you know, these loaders are kept, you know, captured down there the whole time, we don't very rarely get to use them for anything else because of that, and just because Shapley, now I think you were, you were saying, like Alfred, Alfred pays their loader, from the time it starts snowing, they turn it, turn it on, it's on the clock the whole time, you know, I think what we're doing, you know, with our loaders down here is pretty good, but by doing, by doing it the way we were looking at doing it, you know, it was like, it's sort of like a rental, but for a lot, lot less money, and you got-
And like you said, in the prior years, we're pretty much spending $12,000 anyway, it don't matter if there's one loader there or not, you're still gonna spend $12,000 that year, because it's gonna load out and move the same amount of material, so, I mean, now you're, you're taking that 12 and you're cutting it back to 6, you know, and it just doesn't make sense.
I, I can't afford to put my loader down there for that, I could put it in a parking lot somewhere and make more money than that.
What year is your loader?
It's 92.
92?
Yeah.
So if you were to buy a used 92 loader, how much would it cost?
Close to 200 grand.
No.
It's 180,000 dollars.
Well, you said a 92.
No, no, 92, and 92, that's not what they go for, if I was to buy that loader right now, that's what it would go for, back in 92.
Brand new.
Brand new, that's what we're talking about, and you know, I think we tried to emphasize this when we were at the finance meeting the other night, was, you know, like these rates, I, I don't really understand what you did with the rates, you raised them what?
5%, they just, whatever we-
They out, they-
The ones we changed, they only went up 5%.
So you didn't go with our numbers, you went with the original numbers up 5%?
Yes.
And, and reason why?
Your change, your changes were looking at anywhere between 7 and 22%, and another reas, we're just trying to keep the budget low for the taxpayers.
That doesn't change the top number, that doesn't change your number at all.
It, it changes it when we're over budgeted-
No, it doesn't.
-winter maintenance by-
That does not change your overall number.
No, it doesn't, but it, it, what do you mean, you should get the same job done at a different rate, but maybe at the end of the winter, we won't have an overage, if you're-
Well, at least, the, the problem is here is, did, have you looked back through the last eight years and see how many?
We are giving you an increase this year, we cannot give you-
But that's not what we asked for.
-not make up for the last years in one year, we're trying to do it slowly so the taxpayers are not shocked.
The increases that we made in there weren't astronomically high, now some of those, yeah, the-
Some of them were, some of them were a good $10 more per hour.
Yeah, you're talking about an attachment.
No, I was, there was three different pieces of equipment you asked for, $10.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Per hour.
Yeah, those were there.
That adds up.
You don't have to tell me this, but the thing is, is-
I don't want to argue with you, we're trying to give you an increase that will not shock the taxpayers, you guys are way overdue for increases, we cannot make it all up in winter.
This doesn't increase the top number.
It doesn't, but it increases our weekly warrants when you guys have equipment that we need to sign weekly warrants for.
But that doesn't matter, at least, okay, the end of the day, when you have your warrant, and you have a number for each, for your, your surfacing, your general maintenance, this and that, okay, now we went up to 10%, that's what you guys wanted to do, we asked for 20, you went to 10, we're rolling with that, okay, but at the same time, when we're being severely underpaid on these line items, okay, if you, if you take these line items, we're budgeting to these line items with what we have, you understand, it's not increasing the, the general maintenance line at all.
I guess what he's saying is that if, if he has $100,000 for summer maintenance-
Yeah.
And we increased the equipment line to X number, you still can't spend any more than the $100,000.
Can't spend anymore.
But she, but she's saying he's gonna get less work out of it, because that's, I'm just saying that's-
Well, you know, that's, that's, that's your opinion, I guess, you know, but the problem is, is this, we're having hard times finding guys to plow snow, with the numbers we're at, now, seeing you, you guys are doing our budget for us, I guess, maybe I'll try finding some guys to plow, still we can't do it, so we're trying to make it so that we can get these guys to stick on, stick around.
I mean, that's like, especially with the, you guys took out the, the holiday pay for the guys, you know, you took out the time and a half after eight, it's not easy out there to try to keep a crew and have them go out for three hours that night, Dave and I, we've already, we've already probably got eight hours invested in waiting to go out for that, down three hours, and it's hard to keep a crew just to go out for three hours, and you guys, I mean, I know, I know you're doing books and taxes keeping the things down, but if you don't have road commissioners, and someday you have to go to a road crew, you know, have your own department, the number's gonna go sky high, and we're just, we're just, we're doing, we're trying to fight for our equipment to keep it rolling through the town, to save money, we're trying to fight for our guys, like time and a half to eight, time and a half on a holiday, it seems so, every time, New Year's, we're out, Christmas, we're out, 4th of July, we're out, it seems always something happens, not so much 4th of July, but, you know, if we get a big thunderstorm, and the time and a half, holidays, that's gone, I mean, that's stuff we were trying to do for our guys, you know?
You know, the, the, I guess what I'm, what I'm worried about here is, you know, Scott and I are elected officials, and we like to get reelected, and we're not, we're not trying to pull a fast one here on anybody, okay, but at the same time, we're asked to do a budget, as elected officials, we're not hired, so we, we present this to you. Where I come from, back where it used to be, the town Acton made a decision on it, you have a right to, you know, vote, yea or nay on it, as selectmen, and the finance committee does also, but we actually sat down, this is the first time we've ever sat down and actually did a complete budget, you know, line item like this, I mean, we were looking at, at stuff like, you know, the attachments, you know, $1.25, you know where that number came from? That came from the state, and, you know, they're not running the attachments we're running, you know, these attachments, $10,000, $12,000 a piece for these attachments, you gotta, you gotta maintain this stuff, you can't run this stuff for free anymore, you gotta be able to replace it someday, the plow trucks, okay, you know, 55 some dollars an hour for a plow truck, you know, obviously add gear, and we had, we had to go up on Sanders, okay, we had to do that, small sander was getting the same as a big sander was, I mean, I got one guy that's got a 12-yard sander, and he was getting paid the same as the, the little one was, but the little one's gotta be compensated, so we had to make it justify the rate for what you're doing, and, you know, you can call the state of New Hampshire, you can call around the people who actually hire out, which is getting far and few in between, but I think what you guys are doing here is, I think I used the word micromanaging the other night during the finance committee meeting, and it kind of feels like that's what you're doing here, I mean, for you to dictate, you don't know what equipment's worth.
No.
I do, he does, I think Ed has a pretty good idea, and, you know, I dump a lot of money in these trucks, I dump about $15,000 to $18,000 in between registrations, repairs, every fall before it even hits the road, okay, between tires and everything.
I mean, the one that hurt, the one that hurts me is in September, October, I'm dumping all my money that I made from the summer into my plow trucks to get them ready, so they're safe, so they're race-ready, I don't usually get my money back until middle of January, you know, so it's not much of a racket to make money.
Two, two years ago, we made none, I mean, we gave back to the town Acton 52,000 out of that, out of that plowing fund, yes, we went over on the salt sand, that's another whole story, you know, when you take your budgets over a certain amount of time, which Michelle has done, and she does a good job at it, and you average them out, and those line items come out, and they're over every year, well, there's a reason why, sometimes we can't control the elements, but to turn around and cut the loader without, I, I probably would have done a little research, see how much we were spending now, you know, I'm not-
Well, if we, we go to five to 6,000 yards of material a year between sand and salt, times two, that's $12,000.
You know, and-
No matter if there's one loader or two, it's still, the same amount of material's gonna get loaded out.
Not including the material that you're pushing up during the winter, you know, the guy goes down for 15, 20 minutes, pushes up a pile, you know, usually he's got 45 minutes wrapped up into it, you know, how do you bill out for that, you know, he's not there for an hour, you know, half an hour, it, it just made it easy, and, you know, just because Mr. Goodwin was, been doing it for that price, he's been doing it a long time for that price, I mean, I don't know, it was a long time, but-
28 years from late.
Yeah, and just because one town does it for that, well, that's great, maybe Dick will come down and load our sandal for us for that, I don't think so, but, that's why I got you the prices, this is realistic numbers, you know, I didn't call the guy and say, give me the fanciest, this is a plain Jane loader with a bucket on it, and, but, these rates that we've put in here are not, you know, the mower with the sicklebar rate, you know, $40 an hour for a tractor, I was giving the guy $40 an hour with a cab, air conditioning, everything, he was doing it, he only did it one year for me, I couldn't get anybody to do it, because it wasn't worth it, by the time you, all your, your knives and sections, you break them off hitting guide wires and everything else, it just, it, it wasn't worth it, so, you know, we made some increases of these, some of these, you know, the $10 an hour for the attachment, yeah, that's a huge increase by, by eyesight, but that's only used part-time, it's not like that attachment's used a lot, so when you use it-
Looking at the excavator prices.
Yeah, okay, excavator's a perfect example, okay, my excavator, my excavator, everybody in the world gets between 130 and 150 dollars an hour for that machine.
The big one.
Yeah, my big one, okay, that machine's $160,000 right now, new, you know, I paid well over 100 for, when I bought it new, and, and to run it for, what is there, yeah, it's right here, to run it for, I think it was 87 bucks, you know, and with my wage, it was, you know, just over $100 an hour, I mean, it just didn't, didn't make sense, so those rates hadn't gone up in so long, that we didn't think a $10 an hour increase in that line was a lot, I mean, I know how you look at it, black and white, but obviously that machine only goes out on big stuff, you know, I don't use that machine very, very rarely for the town of Acton, I did, when I did the town shed, it was work down there, but, you know, $77 for Scott's excavator.
And that's, that's the one I use all the way around, my old jobs, and I get, I get $120 an hour on my job sites.
You know, and we're, so, you know, I mean, I guess we could've come in and said, yeah, I'm going a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, 'cause that's what it should be getting. And, but we didn't do that. We thought a ten dollar increase, we're not doing a five dollar increase or something like that, I mean, it just, it's not right. And the, the, the line items hadn't been changed in so long. Because the problem was, every year we got told we had to do a flat rate, you know, a flat budget. And we did it, and we did it, and we kept doing it. And now you're saying, okay, we were told that we put our budget in and it would be considered. Well, this ain't considering it. You, you're going down saying, this, no, you're not getting that because it looks too bad. You're not gonna get nothing done. Well, that, you're assuming that we're not gonna get anything done, but, um-
I mean, in far as the stipend, I mean, we put a lot of hours in, especially in the wintertime, waiting, waiting, waiting. Every night you're up checking. I, I don't get one good night's sleep all went along. I mean, it's, to say, well, we'll give you five hours a week, it's-
We can do that now.
We could do that now, I mean, easily, you know?
That, that's what-
I mean, that's sixteen thousand dollars, it's like, all right, that'll, that'll be some of that to help get my trucks ready to go again, instead of taking all the money out of my pocket and then not getting paid again until January, catching back up. It's not, it's just, we put a lot of time, extra time, like, on the phone, talking with all sorts of people that come, come asking us questions, and Jennifer, and-
And you can charge for that. You can put in for it.
I gotta write five minutes down here, my phone call.
That, that, that's, that's the problem.
You know, you're in the course of a week what you, what you put into it, so, you know, put a, put a bill, put a, you know, put it in for two, three, four hours, whatever it is.
I'm at the point where, you know, that stipend, you guys can do whatever you want with that, I, I don't really care. I'm not worried about six thousand bucks. I mean, I'm not worried about all that.
Yeah. Sounds to me like we oughta have a workshop that we tried to set up with you guys a couple of weeks ago.
Well, that's what we're doing now.
Well, we need to sit down and have a workshop, that's what we need to do, and go down through these things.
I don't know, at this point in time, um, you know-
I mean, we haven't cast anything in stone yet, so-
I'm getting to the point where, um, doing our budget feels like a waste of time. So, I don't care, you guys can flat, flat, I don't care, I'm not worried about nine thousand dollars. And, but these rates I'm sticking with. This is what I wanna see on the floor. And, um, that, because it, at the end of the day, um, until you set your tail end on a plow truck all night long, sitting on the side of the road digging and cars flying by and this and that, um, you don't know what those rates are worth. You know, we do. And when you have to start changing oils and you got broken hoses, this and that, it costs money.
And we have been flatlining for so long, we've been the first one to be pushed in the corner.
You have been, I agree, and which is not right.
And they've said that, the board agrees with that.
And we're trying, we're trying to help, you know, but, but to try to make it all, make five years a flat line-
But we're not, that, that rate, those rates are there increasing five years.
Well, what I'm saying is, let's sit down and discuss it. Let's sit down and have a workshop and just look at the stuff and say, okay. Explain to us why this needs to be this way.
Would the board consider if, would they consider matching or agreeing with the wages based on what you've heard? If we, if they agree to the, you know, if we leave the stipend at half of it for the first year, I mean, that's-
I don't care about stipend.
Well, let me, let me just finish. I mean, that still will give, I mean, if we take the sixty-five hundred and we divide it by fifty-two weeks, that still at least gives you something each week, a little something coming in to help with some of the expenses. It's not as much as you wanted, but that's something. And then put the wages back to, I mean-
The wages or the equipment?
It sounds like they're more concerned with the equipment. I mean, the, were the wages more, how much-
On the wages, what, what kind of changes did you make with the wages?
Well, no, they increased the hourly wages by ten percent. How much were they increased by?
Twenty, I think, is what you wanted.
Twenty, almost twenty-one.
The wages-
We'll, we'll go ten.
The, the, the wages, the problem with the wages was, I've got guys who've been working on my crew for nine years. They've been with me right along. I've got one guy that used to be road commissioner in this town who is well worth what I'm making. If not, well, he's worth more than what I'm making, 'cause he's been doing it longer than I have, okay? But I'm giving him the same rate a truck driver's getting, okay? We, but, see, the thing is, you look at those rates and you see the range. There's a reason why there's a range there. That doesn't mean they're getting that, okay? We use our discretion on that. Now, just because the line item from laborers went up from, with the eighteen-
No, eleven to eighteen, that, that didn't move.
Eleven, eighteen, that, that didn't move.
Doesn't mean they're all getting that jump.
But doesn't mean they're making eighteen.
Right.
How many of your employees are already at the top range? I mean, what, do you have most of them at the highest range now? No. So, there's some wiggle room there, so.
I've got, I've got two, um, what I typically do, because I've got drivers that, you know, I gotta have, they're drug tested, they've got a CDL license, anyone with a CDL license is worth eighteen dollars an hour. I mean, you can't find a CDL driver enough, so you've got one, you give them eighteen dollars an hour. Um, I've got, I believe, three individuals that I, I, I got three individuals that are being paid eighteen dollars an hour. And one of them is my father, which I believe is well worth more than that. Um, and the other guys, I've got a couple guys making thirteen, fourteen, fifteen in that area there. Um, but what I do is I give them raises on, they show up on time.
Parent raises.
You know, I, I give them, I try to give them yearly something, fifty dollar, you know, they just don't go top of the scale just because of who they are unless their qualifications justify it, so.
What are the, what's the board's thoughts, I mean, where we can meet in the middle and try to figure out?
Thought we were. Like I said, we can't make up for it all in one year. It's, the tax rate is already increased-
Does it increase the tax rate?
You're-
I've been doing this for eight years, at least. I know how this works, okay? That, those numbers do not increase the tax rate. Doesn't include, all that does is, yes, you might get a little less done, okay? But over, in time, okay, you'll find that we're able to keep our health.
So, an increase in pay and no stipend?
I don't care about the stipend. You can get rid of the stipend, you can flatline up my budget, I don't care. I'm not worried about nine thousand dollars a payment. That's only about three loads of hardtop, so. I, I, my suggestion, I wanna see, I'll flatline my budget. I'll flatline the salt sand, whatever, 'cause we don't know. We don't, on that ass, that's why we should've started this process a long time ago. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, if, if we were worried about that top number, 'cause that's what I look at. I'm looking at the numbers at the end of the day. I don't care about, well, that number looks higher, but it may not even get spent, okay? But at the end of the day, that eighty-four thousand dollars I got in my general maintenance is gonna stay the same, whether or not that number goes up or down. You just might have to work it differently, okay? You might have to put a little less material somewhere than you might, you make that number work. But the salt sand budget, last year, you know, we went over, okay? But the wintertime stuff, we gave you back, okay? So, I don't care what those numbers are. We could flatline that number all day long, it doesn't really care to me. It is what it is. It's, it's a, um, fictitious, fictitious number.
Really, the only thing we've, the only thing we've really added was a stipend.
Right, so that, well, those lines are at ten percent, they'd asked for twenty, you made them at ten. So, that was, each individual line was a ten percent increase. So, if you take the stipend out and match, I mean, the wage request?
The, I guess, I guess Article thirty-three right now.
Yeah, I don't have that. I mean, that has the, that has the request in there as, that has it as they originally requested it.
Yeah, I mean, I see David's point that, once again, if it's a hundred thousand dollars to spend, or eighty, eighty-four thousand, whatever the number was, you're, you're still not gonna spend any more than that whether you're paying a guy eight dollars an hour or sixteen dollars an hour.
Better people-
So, yeah.
Qualified to work, I mean, they're still working the same amount of money.
I do see that point, so, which is a point I overlook, so.
What about the whole loader thing? I mean, I think that you can come to terms with the hourly rate and the rates, but you gotta, what are you gonna do about the loader? Is that gonna be part of, if you wanna leave it the way it was, or leave, and let them continue to bill hourly? Or give them the flat rate? We can look at the last two or three years, and, and I'm not questioning that, but if they're saying that they spent, let's say they spent thirteen thousand, eleven thousand, ten thousand, I can pull the last three years, then-
That is a huge cut, I mean, if you go from that down to three thousand.
Then the six thousand dollars each would be a savings, if we can see that they've spent thirteen, so, if there's a chance, at least look at the number on that.
The only other thing I could say on that, then, if, if, say you guys decide you don't wanna go with the six thousand a year, uh, we just do a fifty cent increase per yard. And that way there, if you don't put out a lot, whatever, if you do a lot, well, it is what it is.
It'd be a two-fifty as opposed to two.
Yeah, I mean, we, the problem is, is you gotta make it worth having that thing stranded there for six months. Right now, you know, during the, during April, just, you know, you got three weeks where, you know, and while it snowed a little here and there, but you have to have them there. And we, we, we have all the things we could do with them. So, you know, we're looking at it, like, this could be good for both of us. We're guaranteed that we're gonna, at least, it's gonna pay for itself being there. And if we put too much material up, more than we wanna put up, you guys make out. So, I mean, it's, it's, but the problem is, is-
The last three years, we can figure out what the loader is, so we can compare to what he's saying.
You can't go to one town and ask one town what it is. Lebanon went up, bought a loader, okay? I don't think we're, we wanna be doing anything like that anytime soon.
No, not yet.
And, uh, they might even be kicking themselves for doing it too. But, um, Alfred, they do it by the hour, okay? The other towns, like Newfield, they got a contract on their snowplowing. Whoever does the contract, their loader is paid whatever, 'cause it's part of the contract. They bill that in. Um, you know, I think if we, you know, right now, I believe Shapley right now is in the midst of going to a contract for their snowplowing.
For one side.
For one side, or whatever, but-
So, let's get the board's input, we, I mean, not that-
Yeah, we can work on that.
What do you, what do you want, what direction do we wanna go from here? We know, I mean, you've been very clear and you've brought up a lot of good points, and I trust the board's gonna take that into consideration. Where do you wanna go from here?
Let's get the average of what?
For just the loader, so the average of the loader for the last three years, and we'll see if you can get that number up. Because if you're spending eleven to thirteen thousand, you're gonna have to increase that number. That's fair.
You also gotta go back and make sure, 'cause I think what she did is she added up the yardage.
Yep.
'Cause that's typically how you do it.
And I'll, let me pull those numbers and we'll run them by you. Make sure that I'm pulling the right numbers, and I'll let you look at them before we present it back.
That's what I'm telling you, she's also gonna go back and look at the hours the loader was pushing up stockpile during the winter, because that was part of that deal, that when we put those loaders down for that, that was part of it. We'd be pushing up the salt, this and that, and everything else.
We're looking for the total paid for the last three years for that loader.
Right now, we're doing it by, by the hour, pushing it up.
You push it up by the hour and you load it out by the ad.
When we first initially put our material in the building, that will be an hourly rate.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, but when they sit and they've been, just sit down there, that, that'll be when this one, we're just loading out material, that'll be the six thousand.
So, we'll figure that out.
Or I could recommend we go, uh, rent, rent one.
Wait. You made your point, David, let us, let us look at it.
Yeah, you've pretty much proven that doesn't work.
So, what about the, the hourly rate increases and the, um, do you wanna see what the numbers look like leaving the, the rates and the equipment as they presented and taking the stipend out altogether?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, taking the stipend out isn't a huge deal to me.
No, it is.
I'd rather leave it in, because I think they're deserving of it.
Right. At the sixty-five?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's my opinion.
What, half of sixty-five?
Well, instead of, yeah, well, it was giving each district sixty-five hundred, so it ended up being like, it basically worked out the same about the selectmen's pay as far as a hundred and eighty something, it's a flat, flat rate per week. Do you wanna give them the flat rate per week, or you still want them to bill for it?
I say bill.
Yeah, I mean, you could bill for it, it's no big deal.
It's more of a hassle than anything.
No, you just stick the, stick a number on there, two hours or whatever it is, whatever it takes you to do your paperwork.
I don't know if Scott's view is on it, but, um-
I mean, I, I mean, to me, a stipend is a stipend, you get it. Give it to us at the end of the year, one lump sum, you know what I mean? So, we're not taking it in the beginning of the year, and then something happens and we have to resign and we already spent the money. Give us to it, give us at the end of the year. The next fix, you know, right before the next fiscal year, in a lump sum.
That, or we just, or that, or we just leave it in there and we pay it out by the week, however. I mean, I'd, I'd rather see you guys just put in, you know, two hours or whatever it is. You're doing paperwork every week, so.
No, not every week.
No, no, I mean, there's, there's, there's weeks when, I mean, if we're gonna bill out for stuff like secretary work and stuff like that, I can do that now with what we have. And, you know, by putting that in there, all that's gonna do is just, hey, these guys are getting paid, why aren't they at the spot, whatever. I think it's, it's not worth the hassle for sixty-five hundred dollars, not to me. So, um, I mean, I've been doing stuff right along for free, but sixty-five hundred dollars is more of a slap in the face compared to what we were asking for, and, um, I really don't need it. So, I mean-
I feel the same way.
We'll just, we'll talk about that, so. Okay, we'll get the numbers for the loader, see where that is. Run them by them, just to make sure that, like you say, you've gotten the right information.
What are we doing with the other numbers? Do you want it?
I don't care if the other one goes back to twenty, like you says, you're only gonna spend X amount of dollars.
Right.
So, I mean, it's good to explain it to us that way, so, it's a way I didn't think of it, so.
So, we're gonna leave the, we're gonna leave the wages and the equipment as originally proposed by the road commissioners. I'm gonna get a number for the loader and the stipend you wanna leave in there at hourly to be billed.
At the moment.
Bill, what are your thoughts on the stipend? What are your thoughts on this stipend hourly rate?
I don't like stipends.
Can I, can I just ask you, um, you have, um, operators and CDL truck drivers on the same line, eighteen to twenty-two? Is there, can you break it out so that it's one of the, I mean, I-
Well, yeah, we kinda did.
Do operators-
Operators and CDL-
Have its own line? Like, how much does the operator get?
Well, that's out, that's out of discretion.
So, an operator can get between eighteen and twenty-two? And a CDL driver can get between eighteen and twenty-two? Okay.
Okay.
The thing is, is, you know, the way it was set up before, you know, we had some labors that were almost making as much as the guys operating and driving truck. So, when we sat down with, let's break this up, 'cause we've got guys that have been working this quite a while that are qualified, that, you know, we gotta, you've gotta sep, there's gotta be a separation somewhere, where, you know, and anybody knows in business, when you have employees, everybody wants to know what the other guy makes, 'cause in town you can find that out. But you've gotta make it, when this guy's way more experienced than this guy, there's gotta be some separation there at some point. And it only makes it fair.
Gives the incentive for the guy running the shovel to get a CDL license to drive the truck.
Yeah, that, and, you know, the thing is too, it's like, my father working for eighteen dollars an hour, the only reason he does that's because a lot of the times he's running a piece of equipment that he owns. Other than that, I mean, I'll send him out on my grader now and then for a day here and there. And, you know, what, what I end up doing is I have him go use his grader somewhere to make up for the difference. You know, because I don't want him getting screwed for, 'cause that's not a lot of money for a guy who's got four, fifty years of experience, you know? So, that, that's, I think that right there is separated, you know, because they're pretty much equal in that line item.
Operators was different than the CDL.
Not really, I mean, uh-
Okay.
So, the situation that we're in is even once we, once you make these final decisions, not having a meeting on the ninth, so you're not gonna make another meeting until the sixteenth, we need to think about getting this warrant over, so, warrant on finance. So, we may need to schedule a meeting at the end of next week, just so you can make a decision with them. All right, I'll get those numbers in a day or two, but I'll get you some loader numbers and we'll figure out what's more fair.
Yep.
And telling me to put the other numbers back in the way they were?
Yes.
And the stipend is to be determined?
To be determined, okay.
Do you have that signed paper for me?
Yeah, can you bring your pen over? She's got a side's paperwork.
Does he want my pen, or does he need me? I need one more thing from you guys. These are those things, I know that we kinda talked, can you talk to Scott about it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dave, you're gonna sign this.
All right, let's move on. Dinner's cooking. Lost my agenda.
Okay. Old business, MMA action plan, nothing changed, dog warrants.
Wait, wait, you missed the conservation-
You wanted me to move on.
Yeah, but you skipped the conservation and forest committee.
Oh, fine.
You want them after me? Oh, my goodness. So, um, Carl Davis spoke to me about the forest committee and what the process was to have, um, who needed to approve trees cut?
Pen.
Pen.
Thank you.
Don't worry, she tried to take mine earlier.
See you later.
Thank you.
So, um, if the town forester makes a recommendation that they wanna do a selective cut on a piece of the town forest, and the conservation and the forest committee vote on it, um, do you want the board, I mean, we can't-
Has this ever been done before?
Well, I mean, they've done a couple of cuts, and I did speak to Lorraine, and we kinda bounced back and forth. I mean, she believes that the, the board should vote on it as well. I mean, we could do some serious digging, and unless there's a conflict, we can just move forward with that. Um, but I'm guessing you're gonna take the recommendation of your forester and your forest committee?
I would think so.
Yeah, I would think so.
I'll let them know when they, when they think they're ready with a plan, just to come back before you, and they can explain it, what they're looking at cutting.
Yep, and it keeps it out in front of the public too, so-
Yes.
Which is more, more important than us giving approval, I think. Okay, old business.
No MMA action plan update, no update on the dog warrant. Road committee, I understand we're picking a date tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
I was, I was thinking May sixteenth at six P M.
Five sixteen at six P M. Okay, I will reach out and send an email and see if that's good for everybody?
It would be right after Tuesday, the meeting.
Okay. Six P M. Yep. RFP for Goat Hill. This was what we had opened last week for the two banks.
There's, treasure to go through and review the fine print of both of them and she certainly recommends based on the interest rate that you go with SIS.
Okay. What is the wishes of the board? The interest rate was one point, oh, one point nine four percent and the other one was over three percent, so.
Correct, three point one nine.
Yep, so SIS was the low.
I move that we accept the bid from SIS. What was the wording on that?
Just accept the RFP for the Goat Hill loan.
For Goat Hill loan.
Yep.
Welcome.
Moving to second to, to accept the RFP for SIS for the Goat Hill loan. Any further discussion?
At one point nine percent.
One point nine four percent for five years.
For five years.
Yes. Okay. Any discussion? No? Call for vote. All in favor? All opposed? I assume there's place to sign here somewhere?
There may not be. Generally, they want certified minutes and on the vote and all of that.
Then I will, well, these are for us?
Um, yep, how many's there?
Five, four?
I need at least one.
Yeah, I do. You want one? A copy? Want a copy?
Well, I forgot this is.
Yeah, we've got plenty, so. Yep. Okay.
Okay.
That's all set there. Okay, so that's gonna go to SIS. Okay, foreclosure, West Shore Drive.
So, Key Bank has overnighted the funds. There was some miscommunication in my office on May second versus May ninth. So, to make sure that it's clear and make sure that everybody's treated the same, we're gonna, we were allowing the overnight. Go back to the original meeting, I think it was the second, but someone inadvertently told her the ninth in a, on a phone conversation. So she worked to clarify and get it quick to, fix as soon as she could, so it should be here tomorrow. I just spoke for today. What I would like, if possible, is for you to make a motion to sign a quick claim deed back to the property owner once the funds are received a hundred percent. And I ask you to do that tonight because if the, I can have you individually come in at the end of the week and sign a quick claim deed.
Right.
The less time that we have this on our insurance in the Town of Acton property, the better. So I hate to wait till the sixteenth if it's made tomorrow.
Yep, I agree.
And it's certified funds, so.
Okay, someone want to make that motion?
I make a motion that we sign the quick.
Claim deed.
Claim deed.
Back to the original owner.
Back to the original owner at, um, West Shore Drive.
Second.
Moving to second to sign the quick claim deed back to the original owner at West Shore Drive once the, once all the funds are received.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Call for vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, you don't have that tonight. That'll be later on this week.
Yeah, because I didn't prepare it until the, until the money's received.
Yep, that's fine. Okay, lawn care bid.
So Lois Missoud, per your request, did in fact get back to me before your deadline on the lawn care. However, based on the coordinates of a couple of them and the unknown condition of some of them in speaking to, um, in speaking to the attorney's office, he recommends that we just keep them, we separate them. So this is the lawn care bid that we're already a week or two behind on that just takes care of the regular town hall, Mary Grant, the safety building, the Lincoln School. Mary, all of that stuff that we normally do. This is the exact same from last year with adjusted dates.
Okay.
And then on the sixteenth, we'll have one for you for the five cemeteries.
Okay. So this reads, the Town of Acton is soliciting bids for lawn care for the two thousand seventeen season, May through November. Mowing is to be done at the Acton Town Hall, thirty-five H Road, Acton Public Safety Building, seventeen twenty-five Route one oh nine, Mary Grant Nature Preserve, four twenty Sam Page Road, and the Lincoln Schoolhouse, eight Orchard Road. On an as-needed basis. Raking, fertilizing, and spring and fall cleanup at the town hall site is also included. Bid should include both a price per mow and a price per season, quote, as well as a list of three references. All bids need to be submitted by four P M. on May thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen to the town administrator, Town of Acton, thirty-five H Road, Acton Main, zero four zero zero one. Envelope should be lawn bid clearly marked on the outside. Proof of liability insurance and workman's compensation insurance or a state-exempt form must be furnished before the bid can be awarded. Bids will be opened at the selectmen's meeting on May thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Interested parties may contact two oh seven, six three six, three one three one, extension four oh one with any questions. I'm wondering if we should move that bid, that date up a little bit, because you're getting right into Memorial Day. We probably would like to have this done before Memorial Day.
Yep, so we can, so tomorrow is the third, I mean, it's only, I hate to put it on the sixteenth, you wanna put it on the twenty-third? Or, I mean, if you do the sixteenth, so we're gonna only advertise it in the Smart Shopper one week, because we could run it the ninth. I mean, we could do it that way. It's, well, that's you.
Kinda quick, but I think.
You wanna do the sixteenth? We can make sure that the people that have voted on, that have bid on it the last, I'm gonna say three years easily I can pull. Make sure they get a copy. We'll advertise it twice as much.
You think bill the sixteenth or the twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Please.
So if this person wins the bid, that gives them two to three days to get work done before Memorial Day weekend if.
If, it's gonna need, it's gonna need to do a spring cleanup.
I'm already ready for a lawn mowing in my yard. I'm just gonna be overgrown.
Outlay poor bill and go with the sixteenth?
I say sixteen.
Do you mind if we outvote your bill?
No.
Okay. Sixteenth.
I just wanna make sure, okay. And, I mean, we can reword the bid. If they have, if we can get them to put the two items in it, you'll be able to award it that night. And that's what happens, is that you're not able to award it because some of them don't have the paperwork in it, so you can't make a decision. So, I mean, you can also do, what we've done with prior bids, incomplete bids will not be accepted. It's not included, then you're off the list.
Yep.
You wanna do that?
Sounds, that sounds good.
Okay.
I didn't realize we were at a question session. Go right ahead.
Getting back to the six that you gotta skip about, about those cemeteries, if we're gonna work it in before Memorial, we gotta figure this out because they're, they're veterans in them and they need to know, it need to be done too.
Right, but these coordinates, I mean, these are not exact locations on where these cemeteries are.
They're the best.
I'm not, and I'm not questioning that. All I'm saying is that when I had time to sit down and review all the information that you gave me, I can't say to Mr. Hamm, go to such and such address and give me a quote on this.
Well, I was told to get the nearest address and I talked to the selectman about that.
And I'm not saying that anything's wrong with that information, Lois. What I'm saying is that it's hard for me to incorporate the complete, I mean, I don't have an exact location. I mean, I can tell you, and we'll use Robin as an example, because he's here, he's gonna wanna go and look at these. So until I can physically pinpoint where they are, I thought it was better to get that bid out than the other one. I mean, let's face it, they haven't maintained these cemeteries in many years, so we are pushing as much as we can. We are staffed.
They will be, they will be maintained this year.
The problem is, they hit some of them.
They haven't been maintained in the past ten years, so.
I mean, we'll try to get them as quick as.
We are doing everything that we can, but we have to be able to exactly locate them. And I haven't had time in the last week to physically, I mean, at this point, we're gonna have to drive out there.
We physically have to go out there and look at and walk, walk each site.
That's what I often do a while ago to who, you know, whoever wanted to go, we could take a ride.
I mean, I have to be able to, because we get calls left and right on these lawn care bids. And if I can't tell them, it's kinda like the document that I just gave the road commissioners. You know, I've got a listing of private, who maintains District one road, District two road, and private road. My list isn't accurate. I get calls every single day. Is Buzzell Road maintained? Just today, I told someone, yep, it is. This is who does it. There was no note on there that the last so many feet of it is not town maintained. So I have to be able to answer these questions in the town hall and the location is key, so.
And I get that. I understand that. I wanna make sure that, you know.
I have to tie them down a little more.
Right.
But it doesn't stop anything that you're doing with the veterans. This has nothing, this doesn't stop that at all, so.
Catalog going.
You can still continue that process and we will move forward with the lawn care.
We thank you for getting the information to us that you've gotten to us so far, so. Okay, so we're amending this to, uh.
Sixteenth.
To the sixteenth, May sixteenth.
We're gonna amend it if, with your okay. I'm just gonna reword a couple of it, basically saying that they have to be included in it and incomplete bids will not be considered.
Yes.
And that's the only way we're gonna be able to make a decision that night on the sixteenth.
Yep.
So, you may have somebody that's higher, but we're saying that we're not gonna take the time to track down their insurance.
Right.
Include it or don't be considered.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, include it or don't send it in. Okay. You have Goat Hill, RFP on here again.
I do.
So I take, I take it that's a typo.
Duplicate.
Gym parts.
So someone reached out to me about some parts that were needed for the fitness center. He said that he spoke with Elise and they are, there are safety concerns, these particular pieces. He told me today that I was supposed to be getting an email with a specific invoice so that we could see where we didn't spend all the heating money, somewhere that we might be able to, to take that money from. I still have not gotten the invoice. I know that again, with not meeting next week, I don't know if this, you know, causes a, I don't know what the concern was for these pieces.
Pins in the squat rack, so they're kind of, they're, they're, the pins are a safety issue. So those should definitely get taken care of. And it's a rack that people use often.
Sounds like a relatively low dollar amount, though.
Uh, fifteen dollars a pin, I think he said he needed four at least.
Oh, that's not bad.
There must be money in there to.
Yeah, no, I mean, the propane, for example, I know we haven't spent all of that, so there was money in there. I just, you know, caution you against either putting a line in there to start maintaining the gym and maintaining, because you know, once we fix one piece.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not saying that's right or wrong. Don't, don't start calling me about the gym.
A lot of those pieces over there are fifteen years old.
Ten, say, over ten years old, but they're still in.
You might wanna consider, you know, maintaining. I mean, some of the equipment might need to be maintained, so.
Yep.
It's budget season, something to think about. So assuming it doesn't exceed a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars, I can find the money within the gym line. You're okay with me purchasing them?
I'm fine with it. You, Bill?
Yep.
Yep, please?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Freedom of information policy.
So I was hoping to go through this with you, but I think that it's too much to, I'm just gonna have you take it home and read it. This is the freedom of information policy that was written by the attorneys in conjunction with the state. It was last amended in two thousand and fifteen. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure so much that we have to revisit the policy. I just wanna make sure that after you have a chance to review it, that we're seeing it the same way. If, for an example, a real estate agent comes in and wants a copy of everything in Tax Map one oh one, Lot one, you know, we go down and we photocopy and we give it to them. They pay for the copy fee, just like, you know, anybody would, and they're on their way. Somebody comes in and wants a copy of their own file, we'll make a copies, we'll, you know, charge them and, and move on. Essentially, this was created for people that come in and want to see every sand and salt built for the last five years. You know, every email that went to, that was addressed to the selectmen for the last five years. It's, the guidelines kinda give the town some leniency. There are some changes with the office manager and some things that have to be changed. But if you look at the last form, so I need you to look at the feeds, but the third document says to be completed by the board of selectmen. Perfect example, we had one come in today. I personally wouldn't have required this person to fill out a freedom of information. They were looking for documents pertaining to their own file. So I need to be able to communicate with the staff exactly what the guideline is. The department had them fill it out because they, they feel like it may be heading down a legal road, which is fine and I appreciate that, but we have to treat them all the same. So either every property owner can have their own file or everybody needs to fill one out. So I need you to kinda think about that. And then it would be helpful if you could give me some discretion in getting these filled out sooner. Because let's just say, for example, we decide that we want everybody to fill one out, to wait until the following Tuesday or the following, you know, to have you sign it just to give her copies of her own file, really isn't necessary. So similar to the debit card where you put a, you increase the limit, would ask that you would reconsider allowing me to have authority to, you know, if it's her own file or within reason.
Her own file.
Right. So maybe you can just review this and, you know, line through and we can talk about it at the meeting on the sixteenth. In the meantime, I'll ask you to sign this so that I can get her file sent over to her. And like I said, once you have more time to look at it, maybe if you wanna look at these statues that it references, we could talk more about it and see what your thoughts are.
Okay. This isn't, is this something we need to vote on or just sign and move forward?
No, it's just to sign, it's just a, you can read it out loud if you'd like.
It is a freedom of information, so.
Yep.
Uh, let's see, so I can disclose who it's.
Yeah, it's all public information, yep.
Okay. This was a, it's a request for information requested by Carrie Chaney, requested today. All documents related to a building permit, number sixteen slash seventeen, I guess that is, it's been changed a little, seventy-three?
Yeah, that's just her building permit number, not the map and lot.
Okay. And she, it's, it has been signed by downstairs, so.
Well, no, I filled all that out, so I'm ready to pass it on.
Yep, that's, yep, I mean, yep. Okay, yep, I have no issues with it, so.
We'll need to figure out what, you know, what determines and who, you know, can we make those decisions so that.
Yep.
Usually if it's somebody outside of information or it's on a public sale or something like that, you know, we should be able to.
Okay.
All right, so we'll pass it on.
Okay. Public comment, anything from the public? Anyone from the public have anything to want to say? Come right up, state your name and what you would like to tell us.
My name's Lois Missoud again. I'm actually here on behalf of the Acton Historical Society. They're actually getting one of the cemeteries done for us in Acton. And it'll be, they're gonna have a ceremony in July twenty-second. I passed out paperwork earlier. If anybody, and he, they'd like to have a crowd. I spoke about having the TV possibly be there. It's tentative to change, probably weather or, you know, stuff like that. So Steve basically said to let you know, it could tentatively change, but this is basically what they're looking at in the day and layout. This is one of the veterans out of like nineteen that I have found that are American, American Revolutionary soldiers. We have more, obviously. Today, I did, I was talking to somebody, did some of my inventory. I've done American Revolution. I've done, um, War of eighteen twelve. I've done, um, the Civil War, some of, um, the W W one. And there's a few others in between. The total right now, just on not getting all the others done, is a hundred and ten. I have, I have the rest of eighteen twelve to go. I have eight, I have W double one, W double two, and anything like Korean, Vietnam, and all that other. And then I have peacetime veterans to go. So I've inventoried one, but working on a second cemetery. It takes me about two and a half hours to inventory. They're a lot of fun. Anybody who'd like to inventory with me, pick a sunny day, call me and say, hey, I'll help. I'm more than willing. It's me, myself, and I. Shapley has lent me some hands. Steve and Ron have both come along. I have one volunteer in town. He plugs along and does, does what he can for me. And I don't fight it, don't argue it. The people that are working on here is also Hannah Phillips as well as Wes Hamm. They're actually working with the Historical Society to make sure this gets done too. So I appreciate everything, everything, everybody's done. Hopefully, this will be a big turnout because it's, I don't remember having another one in town.
So this is a Revolutionary War?
Yes, it is.
Would it be inappropriate for someone to show up dressed in attire?
Well, why not? If you wanna dress in, wear your little hot desires. I don't care, as long as you're underwear is on.
Make sure you remind us as it gets closer. Um, just a real quick thing for you. So the access to the ancient burial grounds that you had submitted, that form, Brad was fine with changing it, so I put it on Town Letterhead and we've changed it to November. And he's also, so remember, it said May first to September, so we've changed it to November thirtieth. And is working on the volunteer letter for people that wanna move the cemetery.
Yeah, because it would be really nice to go later in the fall, only because that's a good time when all the leaves are gone.
He didn't have any concerns with it at all.
To see what's going on out there too. And I'm doing the best I can and downstairs is still helping me. Brendan's lending me a hand, obviously. Your prime aide is lending me a hand as best as we can. We're trying to make it legal, trying to make it happy, trying to make everybody content. I talked to a few other people. I said, look forward to a letter coming. If you don't see the letter, let us know. And we will make sure you get on the list and that you can let us know how it's going. We're also on that. We're hoping that we can put how your cemetery looks. Do you think it looks great? Do you think it needs work? Do you have veterans? Do you have how many veterans you think you have? Blah, 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 blah. I'd rather have a list of what we know, where to start. And actually, Steve, Steve and Ron have moved on to Acton Corner now. They're over that way again. So they're, they're in a roll of what they're doing. There's a good chance that Steve's gonna work with me this summer more. I told him, we'll see. His hours and ours don't collide very well, but we'll get there. But Ron's gonna, we're gonna pick, pick on Ron Revad a little bit.
Hey, be nice to Ron.
He's got a mine full of gold and we're gonna make sure we get it before, before it goes. He does. He's got it really, he's really gonna walk away.
I can pretty much guarantee there'll be at least one person showing up from a colonial militia for this event.
This is fine. They wanna get.
Remind the board as they get closer.
I'm gonna try to get a couple of more.
They wanna get as big a turnout as possible. They don't care who, who shows. They've got a layout. They're hoping. And unfortunately or fortunately, they want me to speak and I said, oh, no, you don't. But we also got these guys coming with any luck. I talked to them earlier and he said, yeah, we'll do it. It was local. And like I said, weather and all that and all, and so on and so forth. This is actually his family is coming out of wherever they're from, so.
Thank you. Can one, well, you're not gonna be running again, so that's also the same day as the Loon Pond.
I was gonna say that, the Loon Pond meeting.
Yes. I had planned on going to Loon Pond, but.
Is that at ten A M.?
Ten A M., but I wanna go to this.
How far apart are they?
Loon Pond is not far from there.
Yeah, it might be.
We'll get you both of them. We'll work it out.
Yeah, okay.
Loon Pond is, we're free now.
The way I'm gonna be dressed, I'm not going to Loon Pond. I am a member of your colonial militia, so I think it's important to show up to this in colonial.
Very important. And I really believe that the Loon Pond Association would understand that as well.
We're with you.
We haven't been there in a few years, so it's nice to go to those though, too, so.
I'll give Steve a call. We'll work it out.
Yep, and by then we'll have another person on the board other than Bill and maybe that person can go. We'll see. Anyway, we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
So, okay. Uh, let's see, public announcements. We have a special town meeting next week, next Tuesday at ni, it's the ninth. There'll be no board of selectmen's meeting that night, and this is gonna be at the school at what time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock at the school. That is going to be the special town meeting.
Tonight, they have some sort of thing going on at school.
Okay, the people at home can't hear you, so I'll say it.
Yes.
Okay, so tonight, the school budget presentation is at six thirty in the gym at the school.
Okay. Anything else that come before the board?
I just, one real quick.
Go right ahead.
Because it's.
You're the one that said you. You're the one that said you wanted us to hurry up, so.
I know, but I can't not mention Nathan Roburge and this construction company.
Oh, yes.
So, if you haven't driven by San Page Road, the four-way, our ramp project is almost done. These guys, Nathan Roburge and his helper Eric Lenigan, they're out of Sanford. They are a construction company who just saw the post on Facebook. They have no ties to Acton. They have donated one hundred percent of their time, and I found out today that Nathan Roburge is actually paying his employee to be there.
Wow.
So, um, we have gotten donations for the material. Um, we are up to probably close to three thousand dollars in material over there. Deering Lumber's giving it to us at, pretty much at cost. Um, we had the, press actually came out today and met with the, um, the Mr. and Mrs. Littlefield, and kinda, you know, the ramp is almost done, so we've had a lot of people come out. I have to give kudos to David and Scott. They're gonna do the landing tomorrow. Um, Dave Archen, Dan Archenball, Jim Driscoll, Barbara Seeker's husband.
Bob.
Bob. Um, I'm gonna, Dan Dixie, one of our new residents, uh, little, who's the one with the braids? I'm so bad. Please check out Facebook. We've been trying to post pictures, but if you see Nate Roburge or the van driving by, please, kudos to him, because.
Give him a thumbs up.
He has, I mean, it's amazing that he would come in and do this for people that he doesn't even know.
Yep, yep, yep.
Williams, Lori Williams.
And once again, thank you for organizing all of it. Without that, none of this would have happened, so.
We need one, we do need one last thing. If anybody is, um, two-by-two, four-foot strips of grip tape.
Oh, okay, for.
That's where I'm headed.
Something to put down, so it's easy for them to walk on.
We need almost sixty feet of it.
Yeah, it's a long ramp.
Yes. Okay. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'm with adjourn.
I second.
All in favor? All opposed? Good night, all.